I'll go through the process here.
Okay.
All right, you ready?
You're on.
All right. The audience participants, participants and general public should be aware that any or all portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio and video resources. All of some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WIPS or other outlets. Persons wanting a DVD copy of this meeting should contact WIPS or the Board of Selectmen's Office. A small fee will be charged. All right. The audience participants and general public should be aware that if you are used, would like to comment, please turn on your video and ask to be unmuted. You can do this by using the hand phone, hand raised feature or make a request through the chat function. Any persons calling in on the phone can hit star nine to raise their hand and you will be unmuted. All right.
Mr. Corbett, just one procedural matter, would you make sure that you identify which planning board members are participating remotely? We had that issue come up recently. I want to make sure that we do that at the beginning of every planning board meeting.
Okay. Uh, everybody's remotely. So then now that's bad.
No, even though it's, even though it's obvious to us on the video screen, sometimes people are calling and they don't know who's participating.
Okay, yeah, we all announce everybody.
Yep.
For a good day. I'm Michael Corbett, the chairman. We have John Lucas, who's the vice chair. Uh, we have Randy Hobo with his, his, like, you're gonna butcher it.
How many years we've been doing this?
Too, too long.
Old Blitzel, old Blitzel, ask Chrissy, she knows.
Hope it's, oh yeah, whole Blitzel. Uh, we have Charlie Williams and we have our newest number, James Wells, and everybody is remote.
Thank you.
All right, um, the first thing on the agenda is, um, was advertised in the paper of the public hearings for the zoning bylaw changes. And we'll go, or read this off in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty eight, Section five. The town of Rockland Planning Board will hold a public hearing at seven, uh, seven PM on Wednesday, March thirty first at twenty twenty one. Via remote teleconferencing to consider the proposed changes amendments to the Rockland General Code zoning bylaw and zoning map. Proposed zoning amendments related to the adding new districts entitled gateway mixed use overlay district. We have some articles on that. Uh, not numbered because it's to be announced, but to be determined. The town vote to rate, vote to amend article two, section four fifteen dash two. Definitions and word usage of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws by inserting the following additional definitions in appropriate alphabetical order. In the existing zoning bylaws, the proposed amendment seeks to add new definitions to the existing zoning bylaws that defined certain terms of the exit, existing Rockland, uh, existing bylaws and add additional definitions that relate to the certain terms projected for the proposed gate mixed use overlay district. And we have another article, the town vote to amend article three. Establishment of the district, section four fifteen dash three of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws by adding a new district entitled the gateway mixed use overlay district to the existing list of zoning districts. Another article, the town vote to amend article three, section establishment of districts, uh, section four fifteen dash four of the zoning map of the Rockland General zoning. By law, mixed use overlay district to include all areas of the map entitled gateway mixed use overlay district dated February twenty twenty one is adopted by the town of Rockland, which map is on file, which said map is on file with the town clerk. Now the article for the town amendment, vote to amend article. Article four permitted uses of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws by inserting a proposed new zoning overlay district known as the gateway mixed use overlay district. Now the article for the town vote to amend article eleven enforcement, section four fifteen dash eighty nine. B one. Special permit to the Rockland Code, Rockland General Code zoning bylaws by amending the existing language to delete the words that are stricken. And inserting the following language, the proposed amendment seeks to just designate the zoning board of appeals and the special permit granting authority for the proposed development of the proposed gateway mixed use overlay district. Now the article for the town vote to amend article five, building lot and general district regulations, four fifteen dash twenty nine. The number of buildings in a single lot of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws to amend the existing, existing language to delete the words that stricken and assert the following underlining language to include reference to section four fifteen dash twenty one point five. Gateway makes use overlay, overlay district. At the same time and place pursuant to provisions of the master in the law, chapter forty eight, section five, the Rockland Planning Board will for purpose of the exact public comments on the following proposed amendments submitted by the Board of Selectmen to the town of Rockland zoning bylaws. And we have a proposed zoning amendment to add a floodplain overlay district. We have an article, the town vote to amend article three, establishment of the district, section four fifteen dash three of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws by adding a new district entitled the floodplain overlay district to the existing list of zoning districts. Another article with a town vote to amend article three establishing a district, section four fifteen dash four zoning map of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws that depicts the boundary lines of the enumerated zoning districts by adding the zoning district entitled the floodplain overlay district to include, to include, include all special flood hazard areas within the town of Rockland designated as own A, A E, A H, A O, A ninety nine, V, or V E. On the Plymouth County Flood Insurance Rate Map Affirm dated July sixth, twenty twenty one. The exact boundaries of those districts shall be defined by the one percent chance flood, base flood elevations shown on the firm map. And further defined by the Plymouth County Flood Insurance Study. Report dated on July sixth, twenty twenty one. The firm in the F I S. Uh, report are incorporated here within as referenced and are in file with the town clerk, planning board, building departments, conservation committee, commission on the board of selectmen's. Another article, the town vote to amend article four. Permitted uses by inserting a proposed new zoning overlay district. All right. That being said. Uh. I guess we can go to the first article. Well, actually, um, there's somebody here for uh, like, for the overlay district. Was that Susan?
Mr. Corbett, do you want me to kind of summarize what you got in front of you and then you can get a, a little bit of, and how administrator Lap is looking to weigh into?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have a couple of introductory comments I was hoping to read if that's okay. And I suspect this is what Bob would have said as well.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Great. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Doug Lap. I'm the town administrator. I wanted to give a little bit of background about this proposal. This proposed bylaw and overlay district was brought forth by a developer, A W Perry, who is interested in developing a mixed use project in a district where the underlying, underlying zoning does not allow for residential use and would include a currently underutilized site. So over the course of the last twelve months or so, the town, working with our land use attorney, Bob Galvin, who's on this meeting, as well as our consultants from M A P C, who are also in the meeting tonight. Uh, we work collaboratively to develop a comprehensive bylaw that's consistent with the town's goals and our current planning efforts. So the gateway mixed use overlay district or G mod, as we're referring to it now, is a zoning overlay district. And I know the planning board's familiar with this, but for those in the public, an overlay just means that the underlying, underlying zoning remains in place. Um, and that district encompasses about a hundred and forty acres of land. So projects proposed in an overlay district would be required to apply for a special permit for these new uses. And the zoning board of appeals is proposed to be the special permit granting authority. So the overlay district is intended to encourage mixed use development in complex sites such as this and for the redevelopment of underutilized properties like this. Examples of the permitted uses that are included in this proposed bylaw include the family, excuse me, multi-family residential offices, retail, services, general commercial, cultural centers, recreation, community facilities, and grocery stores. So the bylaw was drafted to encourage development with creative, efficient, high-quality design and planning and architecture and landscape design that'll enhance the district's visual character and identity. So we believe that this zoning amendment is consistent with the prior planning efforts in the town and the goals and interests of the town. For example, it helps diversify the housing stock and provide for a walkable mixed use development, local destination, potential grocery store and expanded retail. And it's consistent with the town's recently adopted master plan. We also believe that this development could also add to Rockland's affordable housing stock, which is important. So with that, unless Attorney Galvin has anything more to add for an overview, I would recommend that you uh, turn to N A P C to Ralph and Chris to provide some additional introductory comments. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Corbett, briefly, uh, the way the G mod and the floodplain district are organized is very specific. And I don't want to get into the substance because I think that would be best explained by M A P C. Or if you need my help, I'm happy to explain it, but we have to make several different types of changes to our bylaws to effectuate a complete change. And in the G mod or the gateway mixed use overlay district, they had a lot of definitions that they wanted to apply specifically to their zoning district. And I recommended, and I think with the concurrence of M A P C, because of the organization of our bylaw, to take those definitions out and put them in the main definition section. So that's why the first part of their changes involves some new definitions. Obviously, there's new uses that didn't exist when our bylaw went into play and um, you'll hear maybe a little bit about some of those. So we make the change to the definition section. Then we have a very simple change that adds the overlay district to the list of districts of the town. And then we get into a situation where I think it's more the, uh, well, we, we amend the map. That's the third aspect of the change. The fourth change is the meat and potatoes of the change, uh, which has in the substance of the, of the district, which Doug very aptly explained requires a special permit for their uses and M A C, M A P C is going to get into the substance. And the last aspect is we have a bylaw that kind of restricts particularly to have more than one single family residence on a property. And because they're proposing multifamily use as one of the permitted uses or mixed uses, including multifamily, we had to change that aspect of the bylaw. Similarly, with the floodplain bylaw, we had to add the floodplain bylaw to the list of districts that are allowed. And then we have another bylaw that amends the map. And then we have a third one, which is the substance of the change. And the change that you have here tonight is the same change we would have approved last year. But because of the pandemic, uh, and actually some mapping changes, we actually withdrew that article and it never went forward. But what we have here today is really similar to what we would have passed or offered for passage last year, except the fact that the maps have been further updated. So I hope that gives you just a general overview of what you're seeing tonight. And if there's any questions on those procedural parts of it, just ask away and I'm happy to answer those questions.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, who wants to start for M A P C? Chris or Ralph?
I'm going to share my screen and Ralph, you can start.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So for the record, uh, my name is Ralph Wilner. I am the technical assistance program manager and principal planner at M A P C, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We are the regional planning agency that provides, uh, planning services to a hundred and one cities and towns in the greater Boston area, putting Rockland, where we've done a lot of work over the last few years. Um, so, uh, you know, I think that the background that was provided by, um, both Doug and Bob sort of set the stage. Um, we are going to, we meaning Chris and I are going to focus on the gateway, uh, mixed use overlay district. Um, specifically, so, um, there are several reasons why this rezoning is being proposed. Um, and as was mentioned at the outset, you know, the overall goal is to try and create a vibrant, walkable mixed use neighborhood in an area that is currently, um, underutilized. Um, and we'll have a slide and a couple of slides that'll show you where that is located. But overall, the goal is to try and contribute to economic revitalization of the area by allowing a range of uses that currently are not allowed in your current zoning bylaw. Um, it helps achieve town goals that are identified in the housing production plan and the master plan. Um, and in doing so, we wanted to make sure that the design was at the forefront of how these new, um, structures could be built. So we incorporate a variety of, um, design guidelines into the bylaw, which Chris will describe in more detail. Um, it promotes arts and culture by allowing some uses that currently aren't allowed, which we'll describe as we go forward. And the end result is that this kind of change is going to provide some positive tax revenue benefits to the town. So, um, as was mentioned, uh, this overlay district does advance a number of different goals. The town recently prepared a housing production plan, which has goals that include, uh, helping the town meet the ten percent affordable housing goal that's identified in, uh, in state law. Um, and the town was looking for a variety of ways to make that happen. Um, and the provisions of this overlay district will help to advance, um, uh, town's attempts to reach that goal. It would increase diversity and supply of housing stocks, so it will be allowing a different type of, uh, housing type in the, uh, in the district. And, um, you know, overall, the plan identified a number of different demographic changes and, uh, and allowing the types of housing uses and other uses within this district. It helps better meet the goals of the changing demographic profile. And then the recently adopted master plan, uh, refers to this district as well. Um, and identifies a number of goals, again relating to housing, but also uh, developing high-quality open spaces. And there are some provisions within the design guidelines um, that focus on trying to create some open spaces within any development that occurs in the overlay district. And this next slide will show, um, what the extent of the proposed overlay district is. Um, and as you can see, it, uh, it abuts, um, Route three in the northeast corner of the town. And with that, I will turn it over, Chris, to go over, uh, some of the provisions of the bylaw, you know, proposed bylaw in a little bit more detail.
Everybody, I'm Chris Kuschel. Um, thanks for having us tonight. Uh, so yeah, starting off with the boundaries, um, as Doug mentioned, this is an overlay district. Um, so the, the base zoning is the industrial park hotel, um, district. Um, and this covers a portion of that, um, with, um, the town line on the north side. Um, and then it runs along Kingdom Street into Reservoir Park Drive and then Wayman Street on the west. So I'm going to hit some of the highlights of, um, the, of this bylaw. So in terms of uses, um, as Doug stated, this, this is really, um, the creation of a mixed use district um, with an eye towards helping to really create a neighborhood in a sense of place in this, um, corner of town. Um, and so when we say mixed use, we're actually talking about sort of two things. We're talking about vertical mixed use, which means a single building, usually with commercial, um, often a retail or restaurant on the ground floor, um, then with residences or office above that, as well as horizontal mixed use, meaning so multiple buildings of different uses on a site. Uh, Doug also listed a number of the allowed uses that are here. I think in these types of walkable neighborhoods, kind of the, the idea is to generally be, um, as flexible, um, as possible in terms of what's allowed and to really kind of have an eye towards prohibiting uses that do not have sort of contribute to, to a walkable neighborhood. So we would be not allowing certain sort of very auto-centric types of uses, um, or uses with excessive noises, for example. Um, so I've, I've listed a couple of them here. Doug mentioned a number as well. Um, and there's many more, um, in addition to what's here, breweries, for example. Um, and then the other aspect to this bylaw is that in addition to just sort of allowing creation of a mixed use district, um, it actually, um, essentially mandates it and, and it does that by having, um, a use profile so that, um, for example, um, a developer could not come in and do a completely residential project because that's limited to, in this case, sixty percent of the square footage. Um, same thing for all the other uses. So for example, retail is limited to no more than half of the district. In terms of some of the, um, dimensional density requirements, um, and you'll see, I'll explain why some of these have an asterisk in a second. Uh, so we're looking at up to four-story buildings. In terms of the residential density, it's, uh, limited to fifteen units per acre. The floor area ratio, F A R, is, uh, one point zero, which, you know, tends for sort of a walkable suburban area that, that I think is quite appropriate. Um, and it allows for sort of allowing for sufficient sort of density to create a clustered and walkable neighborhood while also allowing for enough open space and, and area for parking. Um, and I think really kind of critically, it allows for, or it requires, I should say, at least fifteen percent of the residential units to be affordable. Um, and, you know, as Ralph said, we, you have a goal of reaching your ten percent requirement. Um, that's a state mandate. Um, and in order to actually achieve that, since you're below that, you need to actually be starting, um, new development needs to have more than ten percent. Um, and then this bylaw also allows for a density bonus. Um, so a development through approval by the Z D A could go, um, an additional story higher. And it could also have residential density, um, increased to twenty units per acre. Um, and just sort of as, um, kind of a benchmark that is on par to what your forty yard district in your downtown is. So we kind of put that on, on the same footing. Um, and that density bonus, um, could be applied if the developer provides, um, certain, um, benefits, um, such as, um, providing twenty percent of units as affordable or providing, um, various public around and public benefits, um, such as infrastructure improvements, either on or off-site, um, in excess of what's already required in the bylaw. Um, or providing various sustainable and green building standards into the development. Uh, in terms of parking, um, the idea was to, um, essentially be consistent with best practices and, and the idea here is we want to ensure that there's sufficient parking, but we don't want to provide too much, um, because that adds, um, additional impervious surface, just additional wasted space and additional cost to, to a developer. So this, um, I think is, we can go into the details if, you know, after this, if we'd like. Um, I'd also just note that the, the bylaw allows for various shared parking arrangements to sort of increase the efficiency. Um, and, and again, reduce that excess of, of parking. In terms of the design standards, um, again, this is something that we're seeing increasingly in, um, many bylaws, especially ones that really try to promote walkable mixed use districts. So going beyond just simply, um, things like height and setback, but to really ensure that the design contributes to sort of that, um, high-quality, um, neighborhood feel. So as one example, um, often when you have a very large building, um, especially one that's very long, it can either feel very monotonous. Uh, it can also kind of have this major kind of feeling of mass to it. And so there are requirements to articulate the building, um, and add architectural features so that the building, um, for one thing, provides more visual interest and also essentially reads as almost smaller buildings. And then the other aspect to the design standards is that there are a number of provisions related to ensuring connectivity and pedestrian safety, such as requiring sidewalks and crosswalks throughout the site. And then finally, I think one of the critical aspects is sort of the location of parking and trying to ensure to the extent possible that parking is located in, in areas that are essentially discreet, so people don't feel like they're walking along huge, um, parking lots. And finally, in terms of the signs, um, I think here we didn't want to be sort of overly prescriptive, but we wanted to have some basic standards to, um, essentially ensure safety by not obstructing visibility and, um, ensuring that the signs don't sort of overwhelm the area and aren't too cluttered. So with that, um, that's kind of, that hits the highlights, like I said, and we're happy to, um, try and take some questions. Um, and Doug maybe can also tag team these if, if necessary.
Okay. Before we go through this, I just want to announce again to the people that have joined in late, the audience participants and general public should be aware that if you are, if you would like to comment, please turn on your video and ask to be unmuted. You can do this by using the hand rate feature or make a request through the chat function. Any persons calling on their phone can hit star nine to raise their hand and you will be unmuted. So we're, we'll go through, um, the board and see if anybody has any questions before you start hitting all the articles and then we can go to the public. All right, uh, all right, John, we'll start with you since you're probably most familiar with this.
No, I don't have any real questions on it. I did work with both Doug and Bob Galvin and, uh, Jen on working this out along with, uh, um, A W Perry. Um, they also did the forty yard district that we proposed through two years ago. I thought then they did a good job. I think this will be very beneficial to the town. Um, and I'll let it go with that right now.
Charlie, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions. I mean, I just would like to comment that I think that, um, this is going to be a great thing for the town. I think it's, uh, extremely important to make this change, um, because this is the future. This is where, um, I think smart development and smart planning is going to go. And I'm in favor of it. That's pretty much all I have to say.
All right, uh, Randy?
Well, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said because that's what I wanted to say. I think it's a great idea. Um, and I have nothing at this time. I'm so far so good.
James, do you have any comments?
No, um, no questions. I'd like, I'm obviously getting up to speed with it, but I like what I see and I like, I love the smart development. I'm, I'm a big proponent of that and especially when I hear a supermarket involved because we've needed a supermarket in town for a long time. So I like what I'm seeing, hearing, excuse me.
All right, I just have a a comment like, um, your percentage of that you, that you're trying to per head or, you know, project with the, with the housing and everything, is that per development? So if somebody comes in and wants to develop, say, you know, six acres, are you trying to hit at the max sixty percent of the housing? At max, uh, do they have to include basically housing in every aspect of what it comes down to?
Um, it's, it's written that you don't have to have a certain percentage of any one use. It's more of a maximum that you can't have any more than any one certain use. So you could, you could have, um, you know, for example, a use that's, um, commercial and, or office and food and, um, you know, service industry that reaches your one hundred percent of, of the actual built area of, of every specific project.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, if there's, if there's basically no minimum, is there a total for the whole overlay district? overlay district? Because basically anybody could come in and not propose any housing.
Yeah, technically that is possible. I think.
And it kind of would defeat the whole purpose of this whole thing. You know what I mean? To get people in there and having everything close. Okay, I just want to be clear. At this point, before we get any away, does anybody in the audience, the general public have anything? And I don't see anything. Right, do you see anything, Chrissy?
Do not.
In response to your question, the development area can contain more than sixty percent residential use though. So there's a maximum residential use.
In the whole overlay district?
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. All right, I guess we will hit the first article. For the proposed overlay district with Tom vote to amend article, two definitions. Four fifteen dash two definition and word usage of the Rockland general coding zoning by law by inserting the following additional addition additions in appropriate alphabetical order in the existing zoning by law. As follows.
I don't, I don't think you need to read them all, Mr. Corbett. I think if everybody's had an ample opportunity to read them. And just remember what the board is deciding is whether it is recommending to the town meeting favorable action on the article or not favorable action.
Okay, correct.
Second that most.
Everybody should have a copy of this and it's it's just to add the definition to the zoning by law. So just proceed on to town meeting. Yeah, we'll go through and take a vote on that first article. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael, I vote yes.
So Mike, let me ask you a quick question. If we're voting on the first article, it says article to be determined. Is that going to be as in, as we're reading it? You know what I mean? Like no.
Just to make it clear, you could, that is relate, that vote was taken in relation to the change to the definition section of the by law.
Okay.
Then, and I'll, if I see anything like that, I'll make sure that we take the appropriate vote as you go through.
I, I believe too, at the time when all this was written up and everything, the article numbers had not been determined. The warrant was still open, so the numbers could have changed. That's why there is no article number. That is correct, Doug. Okay, thank you. All right, the next article with a Tom vote to a man article three establishments of the district. Section four fifteen dash three of the Rockland general code zoning by law by adding the new district entitled the gateway mixed use overlay district to the existing list. Districts as follows. That's the gateway mixed use overlay district. Take any action relative there too. All right, we'll go through it again. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Michael, I vote yes. All right, next article with a Tom vote to amend.
Mr. Corbett, I heard someone speaking. I, I want to make sure that nobody had a question on it. I just heard somebody in the background.
We do not see anything on the chat feature or anything.
Okay.
All right, the next article with a Tom vote to men article three establishment of districts. Section four fifteen dash four zoning map of the Rockland general code zoning by laws that depicts the boundary lines of the existing zoning districts by adding to the map a new zoning overlay district entitled the gateway mixed use overlay district to include all of the map. Entitled gateway mixed use overlay district dated February twenty twenty one as adopted by the town of Rockland, which said map is on file with the town clerk. All right, John?
Yes.
Charlie muted himself.
Yes, it was, yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael, I vote yes. And I see nothing from the public. Okay, the next article with a Tom vote to amend article for permitted uses of the Rockland general code zoning by law by inserting a proposed new zoning overlay district known as a gateway mixed use overlay district. As follows, section four fifteen dash two point one gateway mixed use overlay district. And it goes on to define the purpose, what can be put into us. Ratios. All this, basically all the standards. The explanation is the proposed amendment seeks to amend the existing zoning by law by including the gateway mixed use overlay district of the G mod. Purpose of to overlay an area containing one hundred and forty acres of land allocated down for Hingham Street. So. Hey, we will go through it. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
I'm Michael, I vote yes. And I have a request here from for Patty Anne, if she could mute herself because she was making the noise of being picked up by her microphone and interrupting the recording. Thank you. All right, the next article with a Tom vote to a man article eleven enforcement. Section four fifteen dash eighty nine. B one special permits of the Rockland general code zoning by laws by amending the existing language to lead, to delete the words that are stricken and inserting the following underlying language. The proposed amendment seeks to distinguish the zoning board of appeals in the special permit granting authority for the purpose of development of the proposed mixed use way overlay district. We'll go through it again. John?
Yes.
Charlie's muted again. We'll go to Randy.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
I'm Michael, yes. I vote yes, all right. The next article will a time vote to a man article five building lot in general district regulations, section four fifteen twenty nine. Number of buildings on a single lot of the Rockland general code zoning by laws by amending the existing language to delete the the words that are stricken in inserting the following underlined language to include sec reference to section four fifteen dash twenty one point five gateway mixed use overlay district. Purpose of the amendment seeks to ensure that the zoning ball, zoning board of appeals may permit more than one principal residential building on a lot of land for proposed development in the proposed gateway mixed use overlay district. All right, John?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Charlie's muted. He's shaking his head.
Yes.
I am Michael, I vote yes. The next article will a time vote to a man article. Three establishment of districts, section four fifteen dash three of the Rockland general code zoning by laws by adding a new district entitled. Oh, actually, this is a, we have, before we get away, carried away on this next article. Do you have anything else to say on this, Bob, about the floodplain overlay district?
Yeah, just, this is very similar to what we've just done. We were going to first of all, add the overlay district to the list of our districts in the town. So that's the one that you were talking about. Then we're going to amend the map because what we have right now is a health regulation. Which wasn't sufficient for us to maintain our residents eligibility in federal flood insurance programs. So what we're doing is creating a zoning by law, which is what FEMA has asked us to do and which they say is acceptable so that our residents can maintain eligibility to participate in the federal flood insurance program. And then the last thing is the substance of the by law change. And basically it says what's allowed to exist in a floodplain. How we construct things in a floodplain consistent with the requirements of the law. And some of the things that are prohibited in a floodplain. So that's essentially what you have here now. We don't have a formal presentation for tonight. I will have a bulleted presentation that will probably, depending on the moderator's perspective, give you at town meeting, but in, in, in large part, this is a standardized by law that almost every community that is located either along a river or along the coast is obligated to adopt. And we would have done this last year on its own, except the pandemic came in. The maps had to be revised, the maps have been revised, and now this is a new state of the art by law. When we, when we designed this by law last year and when we redesigned it this year, we sent it up to the state for their review and they've already given a blessing on this too.
Thanks. So a more, a more advanced version of, of last year's that was canceled at town meeting.
I, I would say it's an equivalent version with the updated map.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So people are aware, I'll announce it again, the audience, participants and general public should be aware that if you like to comment, please turn on your video and ask to be unmuted. You can do this by using the hand raised feature. I make a request through the chat function. Any persons calling in on their phone can hit star nine to raise their hand and you will be unmuted. All right, next article we have will a town vote to a man article three establishment of district. Section four fifteen dash three of the Rockland general code zoning by laws by adding a new district entitled the floodplain overlay district to the existing list of zoning districts as follows floodplain overlay district. And the selectmen are proposing to cha- a change to the town zoning by laws to establish a floodplain overlay district as required to order to maintain eligibility for flood insurance programs in an order to regulate structures and uses in the area that have flown to flooding. This article creates the overlay district. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
I'm Michael, I vote yes. The next article will a Tom vote to a man article we establish in a districts. Section four fifteen dash four zoning map of the Rockland general code zoning by law that depicts the boundary lines of the enumerated zoning districts by adding the zoning districts entitled floodplain overlay district. To include, includes all special flood hazard areas within a town of Rockland designated by its own A, A E, A, H, A O, A ninety nine, V, or V E on the Plymouth County flood insurance rate map affirmed dated July sixth, twenty twenty one. The exact boundaries of the district shall be defined by the one percent chance flood base elevation shown in the firm map and further defined by the Plymouth County flood insurance study on F I S report dated July sixth, twenty twenty one. The firm and F I S reports are incorporated. Here in it by reference and on file with the town clerk, planning board, building apartments, conservation commission and the board of selectmen. And the board of selectmen are proposing a change to town zoning by law to establish the floodplain overlay district that is required in order to maintain eligibility of flood insurance programs in order to regulate structures and uses in the area that formed flooding, flooding. This article amends this official zoning map of the town to show the newly proposed floodplain overlay district. All right. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And I'm Michael, I vote yes. Will a town vote to a man article for committed uses by inserting a proposal using overlay district as follows. And it is listed as a floodplain overlay district. Is the reference number section four fifteen dash twenty one point five, I believe, is the same as the gateway mixed use overlay district. So I think that is a typo.
Let me just see that. Twenty one oh five, twenty one point five. It may be, yeah, we may need to adjust that. That'd be a clerical thing that we can make. Just let me just double check. I think we, we had the floodplain draft before we had the final draft of the G mod and that could be my mistake. If that's the case, we'll make this one twenty one oh, twenty one point six. Or I may have to figure that out because consecutively we made one P and one Q and whichever one is P should get the lower number. I'll figure that out. So with that amendment, I think you can vote to approve it.
Okay. Can we vote to approve that with the amendment change? John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
I'm Michael, I vote yes.
And then, by the way, I did figure that out. So the gateway substance, when it appears in the by law will be twenty one point six. Behind the floodplain.
That'll be behind the floodplain, okay.
But other than that, it was just a numerical mistake, clerical error.
Yep. Not a problem.
Good pickup, old Mr. Corbett.
I think it's the big bucks.
He's hired here.
All right. That closes the portion of the public hearing on the zoning by law changes so they can proceed to town hall. So the town meeting, I mean.
So just as a reminder, I'll prepare a draft report. And perhaps the moderator would permit you to read one report that mentions each vote that was taken. So you don't have to stand up multiple times, but I'll prepare that for the planning board to read when the article comes up and the moderator asks for the recommendation. Sometimes the moderator reads the recommendation himself, but I'll prepare a report for one of the planning board members to read in the event that that's necessary.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Yep.
All right. Uh, next on our agenda. We have, um, can we get a vote to approve the minutes of the February twenty third, uh, twenty twenty one meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first, but Charlie, a second by John. We'll go through it again. Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
I'm Michael, I vote yes. Uh, next we, we have a, a bill to pay uh, to pay Emery Engineering's in an amount of one hundred eleven dollars for plan review for Zero Dia Street.
All approved if we have the money in there.
We have the funds for all of the invoices.
Motion approved.
Second.
And we have a first by Randy, a second by Charlie. We'll go through it again. Randy?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
I'm Michael, I vote yes. All right. We have another bill to pay, pay Emery Engineering's in my of two hundred twenty two dollars for plan review for ten fifteen Hingham Street.
Motion?
Second.
We have a first by Charlie, a second by John. We'll go through it again. Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
I'm Michael, let's say yes. Um, we have another bill. Pay Emery Engineering's in the amount of seventy four dollars for plan review for three sixty five Concord Street.
Motion?
Make a motion.
Uh, was that first by James?
Yes.
All right, first, second by John, okay, James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
I'm Michael, I vote yes. We have another bill. The Emery Engineering's in the amount of two hundred thirty eight dollars for construction services for zero, zero Delahan Parkway.
Motion?
Second.
We have a first by Randy, a second by Charlie. Randy?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right, and we have uh, we need a motion to pay the secretary for tonight's meeting. There was a misprint on the a small misprint on the agenda.
Small.
We're not paying her from three, from three years ago. We're paying her for tonight's meeting.
I'll motion for tonight's meeting.
Has amended.
All right, we have a first, I ran you a second by Charlie. Randy?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm Michael, I vote yes. Well, that is all we have on the agenda for tonight, gentlemen.
Excellent.
Thank you for your time. And service and
We want a motion to adjourn, Mike.
Yes. So
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, there we go.
I'll second it.
Now, we have a first by John, a second by Charlie. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
I vote yes, I'm Michael. And we have a thank you to everybody from Doug Lap, just chatted in. So I appreciate everybody's time. Thank, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Doug and Bob.
Yep, whenever, whenever you write that up, just get it to us before town meeting.
Yeah, I'll write it up right away so you have them, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night, everybody.
Bye guys. Bye guys.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, Chrissy. I'll stop by tomorrow.